This conference will now be recorded.
Are we beginning?
Uh, let's give me one second. Let me just see if Joe responds.
Okay.
Give it one minute. We are recording though, so.
Very good. Well, good evening, everyone. I got here under the wire. Tony, Danielle.
How are you, Mayor?
George.
Babe.
And Clark, Timmy, Andrew, I see you there. Thank you.
That's the matter.
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's get started. Karen, if you would, would you please read the opening statement?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice of this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by adopting a schedule of regular meetings for the year 2021. Schedule was posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board, as well as the Borough website, and forwarded to both the South Jersey Times and the Sentinel of Gloucester County, and filed with Borough Clerk on January 2nd, 2021.
Uh, please rise the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic of America. For which this stands. A nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Justice.
Thank you, Karen, for the flag. You would do roll call? That would be wonderful.
Yes. Mayor Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Cosabone.
Present.
Mr. DeLisandro. Mr. Fiola.
Here.
Mr. Halter.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Spence.
Here.
Mr. Melandro.
Here.
Mr. Scafidi.
Present.
And let the record reflect that Mr. DeLisandro is excused for this evening.
Uh, let's, let's, let's jump around. Let's skip over closed, and maybe we can get through the normal agenda. Then we'll go and close, if that works for everybody. So I don't think we have any proclamations. What's next, Karen? Take us through.
Okay, so you want me to review the, the, the agenda, or you want me to just go through step by step?
Let's just, let's just go through. I mean, I think we have approval of the minutes next, right?
Yep. Approval of the minutes of the work session, meeting of December 3rd, 2020, as well as closed session of 2020, December 3rd, 2020? And we need a. Need a motion for that?
Shall move.
Have a motion by Councilman Fiola. Do we have a second?
Second.
That, you, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Uh, motion by Mr. Fiola, second by Ms. Miller. All in favor, state aye.
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 As have it.
Communications, I'm in receipt of a letter of retirement, too, actually. One from Mark Ramos of Glassboro Highway Department. Um, he was in service of Glassboro Highway Department for 13 years. That'll be effective, it was effective, February 1st, 2021. I also have a retirement letter from George Bailey of Glassboro Highway Department, effective March 1st, 2021. Um, and Mr. Bailey was in service, in the service of Glassboro for 30 years. So we're looking for a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor, state aye.
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 As have it.
Mr. Melandro, shall I skip over the discussion items and go to the resolutions?
Nah, let's do the discussion. I don't think it's gonna be that long, Karen, so let's jump into it.
Sure.
We only have two things. Um. So the first discussion is, we've been fielding, myself, Clark, a lot of calls around our position on recreational cannabis. And I want to make sure that we're, we're all on the same page right now. And the answer that we're giving is, while we understand it's legal within the state of New Jersey, there are no rules and regulations around it yet, per se. Therefore, until we understand what the rules and regulations, we have not really been able to formulate an opinion on behalf of mayor and council. That's the answer that we've been giving when, when asked. We've been asked by a couple people, most recently, uh, the gentleman who's the lead guy at the dance studio. Uh, for team, I forget his name, but um, that's, that's, that's what we've been saying. And does anyone disagree with that? I did speak to a couple of you about it, but does anyone disagree that that should be our position at this point?
I don't disagree.
I think that's any of the position we can have, um, with the lack of knowledge. But I just, they made a connection with somebody that might be able to help us, um, navigate some of those, those questions. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Eddie, could I?
Along with that, um, from my desk, I've been getting, uh, some things from the New Jersey Conference of Mayors and the League of Municipalities. Uh, basically, they kind of come in the form of surveys, uh, with regard to cannabis recreational, um, as far as medicinal or, um, therapeutic, um, distribution, um, manufacturing, things of that nature, and what we'd been in, what we would be interested in. Um, and my answers have been that we are, that we will, we'll basically will discuss anything. I'm not, I haven't committed to anything. I have said that we have spoken to people. Um, we've listened to everyone, um, but we have not made any decisions or won't make any decisions, uh, the way, just the same way as Ed just said. So that's what I'm telling to the league, as well as the, uh, New Jersey Conference of Mayors, so.
And Eddie, Timmy, uh, I'm not, I didn't get a chance to call you and Clark, but I was on the phone. It was yesterday with Bob Wiltse, Esquire. He called me about his client's property on, uh, State Street, uh, about some ticket. But in the process of the conversation, he mentioned to me that his client that's in Las Vegas or Texas actually was awarded a medical marijuana license. And it's just a matter of time that he would be putting that license on that building on State Street. And I wasn't quite familiar with all that, but that's at least what he told me on the phone. I don't know if you guys are aware of any of that.
Yeah, we are aware, we are aware of, uh, a person buying property on State Street. Yep.
Where at on State Street? Commercial property? Uh, it's not a commercial property on State.
Yeah, down by the, uh.
By the drop, by the T.C. Drive.
Yep, right there. The, uh, one-story past house, the next building, uh, before the house, that brown, single-story property.
Yeah, with several entrances there.
Correct.
I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He was, he was one of the companies that, back in 2019, that the, uh, Borough wrote a letter of support of his application to the state.
Yeah, that's what you mentioned. I just didn't recall. Yeah, apparently they're tied up in the lawsuit where the state's, they got sued for, about properly evaluating additional ones. And I guess they're, they're held up or something, is what I was told. But I just, just, just since you had marijuana on there, it was a coincidence.
Yep. So, anything more on marijuana? If not, the only other thing we had on here is, as far as administrator updates. And Tony, I will defer to you on, uh, the budget update, if you wanted. Karen, or myself, or if you just wanted to, uh, do everyone an update on where we are. I'll, you know, we'll, we'll do whatever you want there, because we did meet today.
Well, I'll just make the announcement. Um, uh, the Finance Committee agreed on, um, a flat budget, a, a, a budget of a, a flat rate that is no increase. Uh, I want to right off the bat, excuse me, right off the bat congratulate Ed and Karen. They did a fabulous job all during the year, uh, in, in, in so many areas to, you know, keep our finances in line, to make this possible. Several months ago, it looked like we were looking at like a 10 cent increase. Uh, but they got it down to zero. And, uh, in fact, it was a possibility of, uh, decreasing it by just a fraction. Uh, the Finance Committee agreed that that's really not a good idea, because there are, you know, some possibilities in the future, some risks in the future of an increase. So, you know, you don't want the graph to go, uh, down and up. Uh, and so, uh, it's, it was agreed that the wiser choice would be just to keep the tax rate down, as we've done in the past.
Thank you, Tony. Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this will be the fifth year in a row, and five out of the last six, which we don't pass on a tax increase?
I believe so. Yep.
Yep.
Great job, Karen, Ed.
Good job, good job.
Outstanding work, yet again.
You know, I, I know Tony said we can't compliment our CFO enough. I mean, there's some nice things that are gonna come out of this. This was not a budget where we just cut everything. If you look at our capital plan, we're still moving forward with a lot of initiatives. There's initiatives we're moving forward with this year that I shared with some of you that I never thought would be possible. Um, and that's as a direct result of Karen Passione and her team finding money to get things done in a very, very difficult year. So. That's, that's all we have for the, uh, administrator updates. Karen, if you could take us, Karen, or Timmy, take us through the resolutions.
Sure. Um, I think.
Tim's talking on.
That's me, for the word session. Um, unless Timmy wants to volunteer.
I defer to Karen.
Gee, thanks, Tim. So we only have a handful of resolutions this evening. Resolution, um, 5921, resolution authorizing refund of street opening performance guarantee. That's for Brendan Ruder, in the amount of $750. We also have resolution 6021, resolution appointing prosecutor for the Borough of Glassboro for the year 2021, pursuant to the local public contracts law, NJSA 40A:11-1. Um, the RFPs for that were submitted on January 26th, 2021. Uh, resolution 6121, resolution appointing assistant business administrator for the Borough of Glassboro. That would be D. Clark-Purpont, effective February 1st, 2021. Resolution 6221, resolution authorizing phase one site improvement escrow fee in the amount of $150,375.21. Performance bond public improvements in the amount of $2,840,809.25. And safety stabilization guarantee in the amount of $77,687.61, as well as phase two site improvement escrow fee in the amount of $51,865.80. Performance bond public improvements in the amount of $966,693.50. And safety and stabilization guarantee in the amount of $28,432.90 for high street estates, which is Lot 413, Lot 12, in the Borough of Glassboro. And that's upon the recommendation of the Borough Engineer. Resolution 6321, resolution authorizing award of contract for 2021, 2022. Stone, sand, crush concrete for the Borough of Glassboro, and that is to L&amp;L Ready Mix Incorporated. That RFP, those RFPs were submitted on January 26th, 2021. Resolution 6421, resolution authorizing award, awarding of contract for 2021, 2022. Labor services repair of light pumps, light, light pump motors for the Borough of Glassboro, and that is to Xylem Water Solutions. And those RFPs were also submitted on January 26th, 2021. There is one additional resolution, but we're going to do that one separately, um, as per our, uh, our solicitor's recommendation. So I am looking for a motion for the resolutions that I heard, that I read on your consent agenda this evening.
Karen, before we, before we, before we do that, shouldn't we, uh, take out 60-21 until we have a chance to talk about that enclosed? The prosecutor?
Oh, uh, sure.
Was I, I.
Remove that one.
Yeah, I changed the, uh, we didn't go.
Sorry about that, everyone.
That's okay.
Uh, I have a question. Um, on resolution 6121, I don't know if it's semantics, um, or if that's how the job title is, but he's listed as assistant business administrator. Is it, should it be borough administrator? And does it matter?
It is borough.
It's borough.
Okay, I apologize. I can make that correction on my agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you very much.
So that's part of the resolution, right, with an amendment to the title of the resolution to assistant borough administrator?
Yes, I believe, I believe the resolution is correct. It was the agenda that was.
Yeah, because I think I read it correctly on the, on the actual resolution, so.
Yes, sir, you did.
The motion we're looking for is to adopt 59, 61 as amended, 62, 63, and 64 at the moment, if counsel so moves.
Shall move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, state aye.
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 So we don't need a roll call for those two, or we do?
We, we do.
Roll call, roll call vote?
Mr. Cosabone?
Yes.
Mr. DeLisandro?
Or.
Mr. Fiola?
Or.
Mr. Halter?
Or.
Ms. Miller?
Or.
Mrs. Spence?
Or.
And resolution 6521 is authorizing awarding of contract for 2021, 2022. Sewer lining materials for the Borough of Glassboro. Permaliner to Permaliner Industries LLC, and those bids were submitted on January 26th, 2021. Mr. Scafidi, did you want to let governing body know why we're doing this one separately?
Uh, this is a twice, twice publicly bided, uh, public works bid that we received no responses. And, uh, our recommendation from CHIP Finance is Permaliner Industries, and negotiated, uh, who we've actually used in the past, not so sure why they didn't submit, but recommendation is to award to them. And because it is a non-public bid award at this point by statute, there is a two-thirds majority vote required, so we're just gonna do a separate roll call, uh, so that can be reflected on the resolution. Any questions? That would be, uh, the resolution up for adoption, if so moved by council. Roll call vote.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cosabone?
Yes.
Mr. DeLisandro?
Or.
Mr. Fiola?
Or.
Mr. Halter?
Or.
Ms. Miller?
Or.
Mrs. Spence?
Four.
All right, Mr. Melandro, I believe the next portion is your portion.
Oh, well, the next portion is I to make, uh, ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public?
So moved.
I have a motion, open the meeting to public. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now open to anyone in the public who would like to address mayor or council.
Hearing none, I move the public portion to be closed. Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public portion. All in favor, state aye.
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 Motion carries. I'd like to go back then to page one and ask for a, there's one, uh, thing, first of all, on the motion to go in the closed, no, let's just keep it the way it is. Uh, need a motion to go and close executive, uh, session?
Mr. Administrator, that is to adopt resolution 5821, correct?
It is. I'm sorry. I don't know if I will ever remember, say, the resolution, and I do that, to be honest with you, Ken.
That's okay. Every, every now and then I will produce something productive.
I want to see if you're paying attention. Yes. Do I have a motion going closed to adopt resolution 5821?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. And I, all in favor, state aye.
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 Motion carries. You all have a phone number to call. Um, don't forget, we have to come back into this, because we still have to address the resolution concerning the prosecutor.
I have the ability to do it.
Allison Weinroth, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
You need a roll call, don't you?
We need a roll call.
Mr. Costabone.
That's a yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
That's a four.
Mr. Fiola.
Four.
Mr. Halter.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Four.
Mrs. Spence.
Four.
Thank you.
All right, we have a prosecutor. I have nothing else at this time, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion to adjourn this meeting.
Now second it.
I have a first and a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
You all have a great rest of your night.
Have a great night, guys.
Adios amigos.
See you later.
Bye.